We got plenty. All right, let's come back to order for our last docketed item today. And I'll ask, as always, Ms. Fox, if she would read that docket, please.
PZ 16-004. Application has been filed by Fox Run Investments LLC for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for 64 lots, 13 in Oldham County, on approximately 36.2 acres, 12.7 acres in Oldham County, to be known as the Reserve at Fox Run. The property is located at 9300 Ash Avenue, Ash Avenue and Old Henry Road. The property is owned R2 Residential District and CO1 Conservation District.
Good afternoon. Brooke Radcliffe-Weeman with Oldham County Planning and Development. As Ms. Fox stated, the last docketed item of the day is a preliminary subdivision plan. It's consisting of 13 lots in Oldham County on approximately 12.7 acres, to be known as the Reserve at Fox Run. Some site information, it's located at 9300 Ash Avenue and Ash Avenue and Old Henry Road. This development will straddle Jefferson County and Oldham County with 36.2 acres total for the entire Section 5 of Fox Run, with 64 lots total, 13 of those lots being in Oldham County. So here's an aerial view of the site in question. So you can see the parcels highlighted in blue are the parcels in which the 13 lots are proposed. This parcel here, I just want to clarify, is not going to house any of the lots. That is going to be the extension of Old Henry Road onto Ash Avenue, where the entrance to the proposed subdivision will come off of. And you'll see that in their plan as well. And you can see there in the black, the Oldham County-Jefferson County boundary, and that will extend, where the subdivision will extend into Jefferson County. It's just a zoomed-in aerial view. Again, the parcels highlighted in blue are the parcels that we're reviewing today. There's another aerial view, just shows the structures and drives. So you can see 9300 Ash Avenue is located here, and that's going to be removed. And then, nothing is currently on the second parcel that is under review. The two parcels in between the blue parcels there, those single-family homes will remain. They are not part of this development. Some notes and issues. The applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision plan comprised of 64 total lots on 36.2 acres. 13 of those lots are proposed on 12.7 acres in Oldham County. The remaining 51 lots proposed in Jefferson County is an extension of Fox Run subdivision. The proposed Oldham County subdivision entrance Meadow Bluff Way will be accessed off of the Old Henry Road extension, which is scheduled to begin construction between 2016 and 2017. The two open space lots are located in Zone A of the 100-year floodplain. No residential lots are proposed in the floodplain. There are some environmentally sensitive areas downstream of the development, and according to the county engineer, great effort should be made to protect the slopes, the stream, which is Ash Run Creek, and the vegetation surrounding it. The applicant did submit an environmentally sensitive area statement, which states Ash Run Creek is the only environmentally sensitive area located on the Oldham County portion of the Reserve at Fox Run subdivision. The subdivision lot layout is designed to protect Ash Run Creek by framing the creek corridor with 3.5 acres of open space. The single-family residential lots that back up to the creek are designated to be intentionally deep to mitigate any impact on the creek banks by the development of the residences. No waivers or variances are requested, and the preliminary plan appears to meet all the subdivision and zoning requirements. A portion of these lots are zoned R2 Residential and meets all of the lot area, lot width, density, structure height, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard, and lot coverage for structures requirements. In addition, a portion of this subdivision is also located in CO1 Conservation District, and it appears to meet all of those regulations as well. There was a traffic assessment that was submitted. This is coming from Paula Wall's review of the assessment. It states the completion year was 2020, which was used to project future traffic volumes, assuming the completion of the Old Henry Road extension, which is scheduled to begin construction in 2016. The analysis indicates that no additional mitigation is required with the subdivision development. And because the construction of this subdivision is proposed to concur with the Old Henry Road construction schedule, it is recommended that conditions be clarified, applied, related to coordination and vehicular use of the subdivision main access road at Old Henry Road by both subdivision residents and construction traffic. And Paula is here to answer any questions you may have on traffic, but I will resume and complete my presentation, and then, if you have any questions, please give those to Paula regarding traffic. So this is the preliminary subdivision plan that was submitted for the entire section. So you can see the Oldham County-Jefferson County line runs along here. And the proposed entrance off of Old Henry Road is circled in red. And of course, Old Henry Road will extend to Ash Avenue. And then, the entrance on the Jefferson County side, which the Oldham County residents will also be able to access, is off of the existing Meadow Bluff Way, which is currently part of Fox Run. Here's just a zoomed-in view of the Oldham County portion of the lots. The lots circled in red are the R2 lots, so they meet a little bit of a closer setback, allowing for 30-foot setback. And then, the lots that are circled in yellow are the CO1 lots, with a larger lot depth and a larger setback as well. Ash Run Creek is highlighted in green, the top of your screen, next to Ash Avenue. And as you can see, that is located in the 100-year floodplain, but none of the residential lots are located in that floodplain.
What is that lot in between? It's not a part of the subdivision?
This one? This is what I showed you earlier. I'll go back. It's this lot here, and that's not a part of the proposed subdivision.
I think it's gonna stay.
It will remain. Both of those residences, to my knowledge, will remain. So you can see this single-family home here is accessed from Ash Avenue. That's not part of the development, and then this one as well.
I didn't know when the ground was something that was gonna be demolished, or it was gonna stay.
Yeah. As far as I know, it will stay. Neither of those property owners have contacted us, but the applicant may know further. They may be in contact with them. So this is a view, this is in Jefferson County, it's part of Fox Run. So this is the existing Meadow Bluff Way, which will access the new portion of Fox Run, just to give you an idea of where the existing entrance will be, or the proposed entrance will be. This is the north view of Ash Avenue, and to the left there is Ash Run Creek running along here. The south view of Ash Avenue, you can see 9310 Ash Avenue, which is going to remain, as I mentioned, is located there. And then 9300 Ash Avenue is going to be removed, as notated on the preliminary subdivision There's another view of the south, 9320, which will also remain, is notated here. And you cannot see either of these residences from the road. As you can see, this area is very heavily wooded. The creek runs right along there. It's quite a long drive up to those residences. Just a view of Ash Run Creek with Ash Avenue to the left. And then, another view of Ash Run Creek from Ash Avenue. It's the east view, which is the adjoining property owner, which is vacant currently. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval for a preliminary subdivision plan to include 13 lots containing single-family homes, which will be known as the Reserve at Fox Run. I can answer any questions you have, and if you have any questions about the traffic assessment, Paula is here as well.
Yeah, I thought I'd get her, and maybe Ms. Stuber to come up and talk about the traffic and any other issues that there might be. Ms. Wall, if you would come up. Would just give name and address again for the record.
Paula Wall, 200 Whittington, with Neil Schaefer, 200 Whittington Parkway, Louisville, The traffic assessment was prepared in compliance with Oldham County subdivision regs, and the analysis methodologies and conclusions have determined to be acceptable. Basically, because this road is nonexistent, it's very dead end, where the access is proposed, and it's along the alignment of the Old Henry Road extension, in order to project traffic for this intersection with the subdivision, it had to be based on planning, analysis, or Kipta projections provided by Kipta and the State Highway Department. So those were used, that had been, that were provided by the highway department. And the road at that intersection, Old Henry, is planned to be a three-lane section, which would go back to the previous case. We talked about that center lane being a two-way, left-turn lane, and two or three lanes. So left-turn movements will be accommodated, and based on the numbers and the analysis, there's no further mitigation that needs to be required with the development. The only suggestion I had was that there should be some discussion or agreements with the developer about the timing of the construction of that road and when it's connected, since we will have Old Henry Road under construction during that same time. And I think they've, there's already been some discussions with that with Louisville Metro as well, because they're under a restriction with the number of units that can be built with one access and where they connect. So the applicant can probably address that, or spur the discussion further to how that might be achieved.
Thank you very much, and we probably have some questions here in a minute.
Okay.
Ms. Stuber, do you want to cover a couple environmental issues or anything, or anything that we need to be aware of?
Well, I think anything environmentally was covered in the opening presentation. We've not really settled on exact measures, although I've talked to the engineers, that we don't really have a spot for a detention basin. We're not gonna generate a lot of runoff from this site. What we do generate will have to use some green infrastructure, a little bit of thinking outside-the-box type things. We've looked at, look at wetlands, construction, and so forth.
Have to be any approvals from Division of Water? Is there anything?
No, they are not doing any stream construction or disturbing enough stream that would require anything. We just all know that there are significant flooding issues on Ash Avenue, and anything we can to prevent additional flooding down there.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for either of the three of them? Ms. Crosby?
Because of 64 total lots?
13 lots.
Total lots, but 13 of them was only located in Oldham County.
You're approving the 13 lots?
Just the 13 lots.
Correct. But we did want, so you could see the entire development. Those 64 lots will most likely access in Oldham County. I mean, I don't know for sure, but as you can see, there's only two entrances to this subdivision. So they will most likely be accessing either through ingress or egress in Oldham County off of this proposed Meadow Bluff Way. So we did want to make sure that the commission understood that there are going to be 64 lots total in this development.
In that development, the rest of it being in Jefferson County.
Yes, and they will review that.
Have they already done that?
That might be a question of the applicant. I don't think that they've, they're in the process of reviewing it right now, but I don't believe there are any zoning amendments or anything that are required on the Jefferson County side, so it's just a matter of reviewing the preliminary subdivision plan and approving that or denying that.
I just, I got confused with reading that, because when we did Glen Oates, which was somewhat the same thing, it didn't go like this, and that's why I got kind of confused with it. So with that...
And one of the binding elements that was proposed, and your staff reports does state that this approval is only for 13 lots.
All right, Mr. Horton?
Thank you. While you're up there, Ms. Radcliffe, just wanted to check, you had 14 items here. Do you feel like the applicant's adequately addressed all your concerns and all your comments regarding all those there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And maybe you can answer this one. On the one page here from Louisville Water, down in the second box that's checked, it said Louisville Water Company does not have adequate infrastructure. Then see comments below. Are the comments below, the three boxes and the ones, four boxes, checked below, or was there something else missing that we didn't get?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Let me, excuse me for interrupting here for just a moment, but I've had something pointed out to me that we need to address before we get too far into the hearing.
Okay.
So, Mr. Carter?
Is this application being submitted by an LLC? My question is, is the property owner here, and is it a private person? You have to have a lawyer to present an application to this board, unless you're the property owner, and you own it in your own name. Then we can't go any further with this application.
Can it be tabled?
Tabled, we can come back. Well, I mean, the other option is I can get up and leave and go call the Bar Association.
Don't.
Or, the other thing I can do is, it's a Class B misdemeanor to practice law without a license. I've already had calls about this, and I don't intend to have any more calls from the Bar Association, asking if we're allowing people to do what we're doing here today.
The property, let me just state, the property owners did sign the application for the preliminary plan, so, and, I mean...
The applicant, what John's saying is, the applicant is Fox Run Investments LLC. And Fox Run Investments...
It's over.
Yeah, I didn't catch it either, so I, you know...
I didn't catch it.
But we're gonna have to, by Council's recommendation, I would suggest that we table this.
Do you want a motion to table?
Yes. I would think that would be appropriate, Mr. Carter?
Yes, Carter, would that work?
And they could, I guess we need to define on the table, as far as, you know, when they come back, they'll have to have an attorney, and will it have to be re-advertised, and do any property owners notified and those kind of things?
No.
Okay.
Not if you table it.
It could be tabled for a period of time, for one month, two months, whatever, or...
Correct.
May I ask a question?
Well, let's get a motion on the floor first. But, Mr., sure, Mr. Young, come forward. Just name an address for the record.
Kevin Young, Principal Land Design and Development, 503 Warshburn, Louisville, 40222. I guess I would have just appreciated some clarification earlier, so, that's it. That's our point of view. I mean, I've not heard of this before, so I guess I'm...
I hear about it all the time. You're in front of an administrative body, and if you're not an individual that owns the property, that's making the presentation, if it's a corporation or an LLC, you have to have a lawyer to represent that entity. You don't have to have a lawyer to represent yourself, but the person, you can't represent the owner, because the owner's an LLC.
And there, Ms. Dunker, name and address, please, for the...
Billy Dunker, 4751 Fox Run Road, Buckner, Kentucky, 40010. I guess I just find it odd that we get to this point, especially after I've been sitting here since nine o'clock, to find this out.
I'm sorry, but it's been known to everybody that that's what you have to do. We've been through this several times, and I don't know why you don't know that.
As chairman, I apologize, because I, it's, I didn't realize it either, until we, you know, until it was just pointed out to me as far as today, on this particular hearing, so...
There is a, there's actually a document that I provided to Planning and Zoning that was supposed to be handed out to every applicant, that says if you're an LLC, a corporation, or any entity that's an owner of property, that you must have an attorney to represent you at any hearing before this body. I think that was, what, a year ago?
Yeah, we got that.
Yeah, I mean, that came out before, I mean, and I didn't notice this too, but yes, that's...
Well, we didn't know who was gonna present it.
Right, that's true.
And I'll take responsibility for this, that I didn't... Well, it's done, and so I would ask for a motion, I guess, to table for, can we get this done in 30 days? All you gotta do is get an attorney to come back next month.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this particular application until the next regular scheduled meeting of the commission. I would also recommend that we place them first on the agenda. We don't need to send out any other notification to property or whatever, because it's a table.
Correct, that's correct.
All right, that's my motion, if it meets approval of council.
And with the direction that they need to provide an attorney to represent the LLC.
Yes, sir. I bet they got that.
All right, we have a motion?
Second on a motion.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Well, that's non-debatable, non-amendable, comes to immediate vote. All those in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, motion on docket PZ 16004 is tabled. All right. We've got two things, I'm sorry. Let's move into other business, and then we'll, if we have some questions at the end, we'll address those. We've got two items of other business, extension of expiration on Quail Creek. Let's come back to order, so we can finish up our docket today and get wrapped up. I'm sorry, Ms. Alvey?
Yeah. Pinnacle Properties had filed for a two-year extension. Their original expiration for Quail Creek expired in February of 2016. They submitted all the documentation or requests, and then, as staff, as approved by the Planning Commission, we send that out to all of the utility agencies for review, to see if there's any outstanding issues or any circumstances that have come up over the last two years since their lease, their last expiration request. So we sent this out for Quail Creek. We got no outstanding comments back from the utility agency, so it was approved by staff. So the new plan is set, or the new plan is now set to expire February 28th of 2018. So they'll have to file again in February of 2018 for another extension at that point. But I wanted to bring it to the commission's attention and then put it on record, so it's in the minutes as well.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Carter, do we need a motion on this?
We, I think this is kind of an administrative, because you gave, you gave the staff the ability to offer these extensions. This is more of a reporting than it is any kind of a requirement.
It's just informational only.
Okay.
We chose that we would bring every one of those that got extended to the commission, just as a matter of other business.
Okay, Mr. Horton?
Yeah, question. Didn't, at the time, didn't we say something, this was gonna be put on the application, so that when someone's applied, they automatically...
You're going back to something else. We went on to another subject, you weren't paying attention. You're talking about being...
We're talking about extension of expiration for this.
Yeah. No, 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 no. Now, we'll do that, and then we'll get to that at the end of, after our zoning ordinance update, so we can, okay, so we're good on that? We don't need a motion?
Yes, that's other business, and you don't need to take any action.
Okay. One other item of other business, just want to bring you up to date a little bit on the zoning ordinance updating, where we are. Mr. Urban, would you kind of, or Ms. Alvey, one or the other, whoever wants to...
Well, we passed out to you, the Study Review Committee has been meeting over many, many months on the changes to the Land Development Code, or the zoning ordinance. So we have put together, as of last, the 16th, last Tuesday, is that when it was, I believe? We went through all of the comments that we received from, through the public comment process, and public open meetings and all that stuff. So we've gone through it, and we have summarized all of that and put all the changes into one document, and those have been provided to you, so ahead of our next meeting. And I think that the plan is, is that we're gonna present all of the recommended changes to you at the March meeting, and then go from there, and hopefully those will get recommended to fiscal court and the legislative bodies from that point.
The only thing I want to add is that, of course, the Study Review Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. There are six members of the Planning Commission that are voting members on the Study Review Committee, and I think they all voted at the last meeting last Tuesday to advance what we have done so far, in terms of recommended changes of the zoning ordinance to the full commission for your consideration. And again, that will be in the March meeting.
And so, you'll be receiving a printout of that, of those suggested changes?
They've already got them. They have them at their seat.
Okay, okay. Okay, good deal. So just, you know, take a look at those before next month, and, you know, if you've got any questions or whatever, you know, talk to Mr. Urban, or Ms. Alvey, or myself, or whatever, one of the committee members, and, you know, we'd like to have a discussion and vote on moving these forward to the legislative bodies at our March meeting.
Correct. And we will have a March meeting. We obviously will have the one that was continued from today, and a zoning change that I know of so far.
We also have, the school board is bringing the updated numbers for us that we vote on every year, so they will be here to do that.
Right now, we have four docketed items for March.
I think so.
Believe so.
Fourth Tuesday, whatever that, let's see. Whoever gets there first. 22nd.
Yes.
March 22nd.
March 22nd.
All right, is that, any questions on the zoning ordinance update? If not, we'll entertain any questions about what we discussed with our last docket. Mr. Horton or Ms. Albertson?
Now I'm ready.
Right, yes, sorry.
Yeah, way back when we were discussing this, I thought that we had said something about putting that statement and that requirement on every application, so that staff and everybody else, we don't have to worry about it. They see it, it's part of the application process.
Well, again, I'll take ownership of this. I thought that when you had a standard subdivision, that really didn't need to be in front of the Planning Commission at all, because it met all the requirements with no waivers and variances that they didn't have to. It was my fault.
But do we have it listed? I mean, do we have it printed on...
It will be. It will be after today.
Let me just say, let me just say, the simple solution to this is to put on the application, if you are a corporation, or an LLC, or any other entity besides an individual, you must have your attorney sign this application. And that way, we don't get to this point. And everybody understands, I have a problem with them even getting this far without a lawyer on an LLC, in the Planning Commission. It's just, it's a problem, it's gonna keep coming up. I got a call a month ago from a lawyer from the Kentucky Bar Association, and they worked, they don't work for the Bar Association necessarily, they work for the Supreme Court. And asked, said they got a report that we were approving subdivision plans like this without an attorney. I assured them we were not, that I got that straightened out. So we need to get it straightened out, we have to get it straightened out. It's not only a problem with the Supreme Court of Kentucky, and they're citing individuals, not just lawyers, individuals for practicing law without a license. And if you don't want to get a summons like Jim Urban did, to appear before the Supreme Court to explain why you're practicing law without a license, we need to stop it. Because they can hold you in contempt and put you in jail for six months. The other thing is, it's a crime. It's a Class B misdemeanor to practice law without a license in the state of Kentucky, which carries 30 days, 60 days in jail, I think. which carries 30 days, 60 days in jail, I think. So I think to clear it up, we just need to have on the application for everything that comes through, the planning and zoning, that if you're an LLC or a corporation, and that's easy to determine, because it's made by the property owner, and the property's either held by a corporation, LLC, they have to have an attorney's signature on it before they even process the application in planning and zoning. That way, we get around this, and it doesn't come up, and nobody's embarrassed about it.
Question, you said signature. Do you mean also their presence?
No, they have to be here too.
Okay, signature and presence, yeah.
I thought earlier you mentioned that the property owner could represent themselves, or no?
Yes, they can, if they personally own it.
Well, what if, say, it's my property, my LLC is the listed owner, but the LLC is only me and my husband?
Doesn't matter.
Still have to have the attorney?
No, you have to have a lawyer.
Okay, just wanted to check. I'm not going forward to anything, I just wanted to know.
And I don't make the rules, I'm just saying, that's the way the Supreme Court of Kentucky's interpreting it.
Mr. Carter? So in instances where the developer may not be, may not have yet taken possession of the property...
Well, he's representing the person before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right.
I mean, he's the one making, whoever's making the application, if they're not an individual, they have to have a lawyer.
But that's not the owner of the property, so they're probably going to be organized as an entity of some other sort, and they're gonna need counsel.
Whatever entity's making the application.
Right, okay.
Before, I think I saw a couple other questions. One question I had, Mr. Carter, the, you know, we have done this for years without representation. Did something change, or did they just start enforcing this within the last year or two?
Somebody got caught.
Okay, because we have done it for...
But not Jim Urban.
Not Jim Urban. He got caught once.
Well, that was in something different.
But I mean, this is something that has changed over the last couple of years or whatever.
No, this has always been the law.
Okay.
It's always been the law.
All right, okay. There are other, there are other planning commissions that are not enforcing it also that I'm aware of, so...
Well, that's their problem. I don't want us to, I don't want it to be our problem.
I don't want to serve jail time, that's for sure.
The point is, the bar is looking at us.
Ms. Crosby?
I can vouch for him sitting there in that chair, because I worked across the street when this all came up, several years ago, when people were coming in filing lawsuits, LLC, and especially these apartment, people who rent apartments. When they learned that they had to have a lawyer to come in and file that lawsuit, we, me, and the other person in that office took the brunt of their verbal language when that happened. So, and that's been well over, well, I've been retired for three years, it was way before then, so it's been there, but it was not in here. And it came up in here, and we talked about that, and it was something supposed to be on there. I think we did let somebody go one time, because they did not, they had an LLC, and we didn't let them go through. But it's an embarrassment. I'm sorry, I sat here today with the pit of my stomach falling out for that gentleman.
Mr. Williams, do you have something?
I just wondered what jail that Jim was gonna be in.
They've not put anybody in jail yet for it, but my point is, I don't want to be the first one.
A free six-month vacation?
No, I don't know.
There's no...
Anything else?
We'll come see you, boys. This is only for administrative legal proceedings.
Anytime they have to come before an administrative body.
Is your mic on? Let's hold on a second. Is your mic on?
Will they have to have that?
It's not a legislative body.
That's not a legislative body.
Okay, because, I mean, there are commissioners there, I guess, that sit in there, so...
No, not on TRC. Technical Review Committee is utilities.
Okay, okay. Just on the Study Review Committee. So it means the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustments? Yep, yeah, okay.
So I just, I want to make sure I understand clarification. It's, so it's any application, any business that comes before you for a program for signs, a waiver?
Anything that comes before us.
Anything, okay, I just want to make sure.
Unless it's an individual who owns an individual piece of property.
Okay.
I mean, who did the homeowners association?
Yes.
That's, I mean, I don't... That's okay, go ahead.
All right, folks.
It's not like these people haven't, these two gentlemen haven't been here before, or have not been there exactly.
No, they've been here before several times, but they...
They've been here before.
All right, well, let's wrap this up today, and we've got, it's left three... Oh, you have one? Okay.
Yeah, just, if I can have your attention for another minute, there's a training opportunity coming up in April. There's a Regional Mobility Council Transportation Summit in Louisville on April 14th. Registration starts at 9:30 in the morning, it goes till 4:00 in the afternoon. It's hosted by the Regional Mobility Council of Kipta Region, and it's gonna be at the Fraser Museum that was there last year. It's an interesting kind of alternative subject, if you will. It's about mobility, it's not just about single occupancy vehicles. Last year's presentations were interesting. I'm not sure, it looks like there's only one speaker this time. I can't really tell from this early announcement, but...
Send that out to the...
We can, we just got this yesterday, so April 14th, if you're interested, put it on your calendars, reserve the date.
And we do have, you know, we will have, look like four docketed items next month, and we will consider our revised, what SRC's been working on here, the ordinance for next month, so be sure to take a look at that, and, you know, if you have any questions, you know, get those to us, and then we'll try to address them before we get into our meeting next month. But apologize for not, for the last one here, but, you know, we'll, we will straighten that out. So with that, we will stand adjourned at 10 minutes after 3:00.